To state their position on this rezoning, having opposition, first of all. Yes, ma'am. Would you please come up?
Do I have to run?
Yes, ma'am. We made it for the record. Name and address.
I own a house directly across the street at 508. And my tenants complain of mice, which are attracted by the trash. They look out their window and that's what they see, trash. My concern though is why they have been able to use that for commercial purposes when it's residential. And why is the trash not monitored according to the code?
Victor? You know, I didn't want to put you on the spot.
What answers I have for that is when they put that dumpster there, nobody ever said anything. I did. I never noticed it. You know, nobody ever complained, nobody. But when somebody did, I went to them, told them, you know, that's not zoned correctly for that. They would either have to move it and another option would be to have it rezoned. And they chose to have it rezoned. So by law, that's their process that they're allowed. So.
Well, they're supposed to have a six-foot fence around.
And my recommendation on the hearing that the zoning and planning had, that if this did go through, that they would have to put a fence around the trash and everything.
They've used it for commercial purposes when it's not even zoned. So to me, they're saying, yeah, give us the zoning so we can make legal what we've been doing for a while that is illegal. And that's where I feel.
And then they find a dead body there.
Yes, not to mention the dead body and the drug deals.
I'm looking up the area.
Is that shed that's back there?
Shed in the dumpster. Ms. Bruce, what's your address? What's your address for the record?
It's 500. Oh, I own the house at 508 Bell.
But you're.
Oh, 1112 Wado.
1112 Wado, sorry.
So Victor, would the fence include the shed that's back there too? It would go around all of that?
Yes.
And would it be a privacy fence or a chain link fence?
Privacy fence.
Privacy fence. Has to be, yeah.
Let's start with opposition.
Yes, sir. I know about.
They're naming address.
John Neighbors, 500 St. Francis. My problem is that zoning it commercial is going to make it the business go further back into the neighborhood. You already got drug dealing, you got trucks pulling in, putting in fuel. They're having to hear that and put up with that nonstop. The further you go back into the residential neighborhood, the more it's going to be heard by other people who owns houses throughout that area. I've talked to several people. I've got a petition. Joel Brown owns a house right next to it.
I'm looking at the map.
And he said he didn't want it to be commercial because he bought the property and it was nothing there. Brandon Moore, they're picking up trash nonstop right over there. But there's, it's just the further back you let a business go back in to be commercial, the worse it's going to be for the people who live around it, especially with the gas station. If they say you zone that for commercial and they put a fence around a building and dumpster, two years from now, if they want to go in there and put a car wash there, they can do that. And then you're going to have to worry about people pulling in a car wash with their radios on and then they're going to have to be listening to that. And I don't think any of y'all would want that around y'all home either. That's my opinion on it.
Any questions?
I've got a question. That's out there?
Yes, sir.
What's it servicing? I'm the one calling trouble, Patty.
What do you mean servicing?
What is that dumpster servicing?
Hucks.
With Hucks? It's just servicing Hucks?
Hucks owns the lot that sits on immediately behind Hucks.
And it's residential there behind Hucks? They shouldn't have moved it forward?
Victor, I don't know the details of that line and where it starts and stops.
Well, there's an alley. There's an alley that goes behind Hucks. And that lot is on the other side of the alley.
It's really funny. So then that's all.
It's not fenced in the dumpster?
I have pictures of it.
Do they want it all the way to Ballard?
Excuse me?
All the way back to Ballard?
Yes.
Right behind Hucks, the alley there, they had, we had, they had had a hearing on this several years ago. I don't remember how long ago, period, though. The alley, they went in there and they have concreted the alley, the city alley. And they've been using the city alley and that lot for commercial instead of it, the way it's owned for being residential. And to me, I don't see how they were allowed to concrete an alley. I mean, if you get anything done in Kent, you're supposed to get a permit to get something done.
But they're not instructed. It's a drive-through alley.
It's a drive-through alley, but they have concreted it for their own use. And I mean, they're just using the property for commercial. And we don't want to see it being commercial and then two or three years from now, they come in there and they put a car wash like they were wanting to do last time. And then you've got people pulling in a car wash, using vacuum cleaners and turning boom-boom music up all hours of the night. And people that lives around there, they don't want to hear that. And I would want to hear it. And I don't think any of you guys would want to hear that. But that's, that's, that's the point we were just trying to.
Lord, right now it's at 24 hours.
Right, right. And that's, and they're open 24 hours. And every, most of people knows what goes on up in front of Hucks. It ain't good. And if you let it go on back further in the neighborhood, you're going to carry that back with it. So that's, that's our opinion. You know, that's what we think.
My main concern is the noise, if I'm not, if I'm understanding.
The noise is the main thing about it, yes, sir.
Ms. Bruce, your main concern is just the trash, the side of the dumpster without the fence?
The government, maybe the tracks, the unsavory people, people grouping through the trash for food, which is a shame.
That's been happening on numerous occasions.
You want to force them to get it out? Around it like it is?
Pardon me?
I didn't know.
No, because it's not zoned correctly.
If they're in residential, you can immediately make them move it because they can only be there a certain amount of months.
Yes, right, yes.
So I mean, you can go there tomorrow and say, this has been here longer than time, period. Move it.
That was their, that was their two options. Either move it or, and they requested it to be rezoned. So if the rezoning passes, then they put a fence up around it, that'll be that. If the zoning does not pass, they have to move it off the property.
How much room do they have on the east side of their building?
I don't know.
If they, can they, with zoning laws, can they use the property strictly as a dumpster site?
No.
Okay.
And if they.
Which means they will put something else over there.
That's my question. Can they then, if it's rezoned, can they do anything they want to with that property?
Not anything they want to, anything that's allowed in B2, which was made a request.
Okay, any more opposition here? There's not. I want to read to you the planning and zoning commission's recommendations that we had on the record. Their recommendations was to, after discussion, if Young made the motion to approve the zoning change with the stipulation that a fence is put up around the dumpster, Mr. Gribling, second, and all present voted in favor of rezoning it to B2. And that was, that's the summary of the hearing. So the planning and zoning commission approved it.
Okay. If this went through and it was passed, Mr. Neighbors was talking about them attempting to put a car wash in there back. One of them, everybody, when they first built the store.
Yeah.
And it was shut down at that time. They still have to pass that through code if they're going to do something like that?
Yes, they have to apply for a building permit, which a car wash is allowed in B2. And the only stipulations would be that it be, have the correct setbacks from the property.
So once it goes to B2, they're able to do anything with that property for its commercial that they want to do?
That's allowed in B2.
That's right. That is such in the car wash.
Yes. It's not necessarily commercial. There's a, there's a difference, a fine line in there between business and commercial.
But a car wash wouldn't be like what they were wanting to do to start with.
Let me ask you one other question you may or may not know. Can a property be partially zoned or does it have to be the entire property?
Has to be the entire property.
Yes, ma'am.
When they first bought it, we lived on Ballard Street. And we did, they were going to put in a car wash and we did fight back. And so it remained residential. But I want you to think about your own property. What is something like that going to do to the value of your home? And that's what the whole block and the block on the other side are looking at. It's just not a very pleasant thing to think about.
All right, any more questions regarding this hearing? So the next step is this will be presented to the council and the council will vote on it. And that'll be the final decision, once that's made. The opposition will be made. I don't believe it's on the agenda for this evening. So it'll be the next meetings, the next meeting coming up. If you're more welcome to be there, I would encourage you to be here. If the rest of the council is not here, might not have heard the discussions, might have some questions. But that's, there's really nothing else we can do because we're eating for this topic. Appreciate you being here. This hearing is, we'll go get about 10-minute break and we'll start counting. Everyone, welcome to the city council. At this time, would we please stand in invitation? That thing, would you please?
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you so much for the day that you have made or for the beautiful weather we've enjoyed today. Thank you, Lord, for our community and for all the good things you are doing in our community and in our churches. And we just pray, Father, for the meeting tonight, for the men and women who are standing right now in front of us. We pray for wisdom and guidance for them. Thank you for their dedication and service to our community for the time that they give. And, Lord, we just pray you would be sought in all that we do in our community. And we just ask your blessing, God, upon all that, all that happens. So we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Ms. Palmer, I always give you last time. Please, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, in your package, you've got the minutes for October 17, 2023. We have any corrections or additions? Now, do you entertain a motion to pass it?
Motion to pass.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. I'll move into committee reports. Have any committees? Mr. Wayne, I think you might have something.
Oh, my. I found that in my form of papers. We need to plant a rock, a deal about moving the, what do you call it, an awning?
Awning.
From Station 1. From Station 1, we need to sell it. Have you talked to F C C?
Yes.
They're interested? So we're looking to sell it. If it's okay, we got it.
For what amount? And they all want to move it?
They'll move it.
Have we given this size?
Sorry? It's 24 by 24, yeah?
No. I think it's 24 by 12. And it's, it's a tall one. Probably.
Do we need to take bids on them?
Dollar amounts?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think the history on this, they discussed it tonight, is FCC was awarded a grant to fund a incident response. I'm looking at Lance. Okay. Incident response that can be used for K T D or K F D or E Z D around this area. So they're kind of being neighborly and offering it to them at a somewhat reduced price. And since we're not using it, that's, that's what they may propose, they're getting.
They currently do not have a place to store it. And we need to really get it out.
We weren't, I don't believe we were actively looking to sell it until they approached us about it. That's what it's about. So you had a motion, Mr. Wayne, or did you?
I had a motion. I'll make that.
We have a motion and a second to sell the X-large carport for $1,500 and they will move the carport at no cost in the city. Any more discussion?
Where's that money going to?
Well, I have to get with Jan. That was brought up in our fair committee meeting. I don't know where that money was pulled from. Wherever it was pulled from, that's where it'll go back.
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
That's fair enough.
Get it washed.
And once it's moved, is there anything that the surface that has to be like concrete patched or anything?
No, it's sitting on gravel.
Okay.
Do we know where it cost us?
No, I've done a quick research today, just Google searched it for that size. And the price of the building alone was three. So we figured about half price.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed. Motion passes.
We also discussed putting title searches for mine houses to be going in. So for total cost of thousands?
Total cost of thousands. That's for the five houses that we approved. A few meetings ago.
I'll make that motion.
To further expansion, aren't you? We have a motion, we have a second discussion. We'll, I feel like we'll pull that out of the.
We did the question. I was trying to figure out what we had in there.
Want a copy?
Yeah, please.
The bid station committee is down $15.62 to $99.
Is that house, is it a burned, burned out?
It's the five houses we approved. Some were burnouts. And there was maybe ones that really dilated, but for the most part, our biggest complaint. Any more discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Mr. Wayne?
That's all I can remember.
You've got one more item.
Yeah, about the.
Rubbish and garbage.
Rubbish and garbage.
Now I probably write that one down again.
You want the copy?
Right there. Right there was a person come to us wanting to eliminate some wording in our portages. We're kind of under the impression that we don't need to do that. In a couple of years, it'll go away anyway. We're in favor of leaving it as is and do that. So do we need to have that in some motion?
No.
This is important information. So this is regarding the rubbish and garbage section.
Yeah, what happened was what the proposal from the owner was, I think that was. Was that the owner's responsibility to provide the trash to, uh, to rental dwellings be taken out of Section 308.
Any questions? We'll move on. Mr. Wayne, you still have the floor. Let your.
That's all I got.
Any reports?
Please, committee.
Yes, sir.
We, we'd like to move Hunter Sutton, which we hired. No less, committee, his full-time officer, his, his job has changed. He's had other things that he's going to have to be doing, so he's going to have to leave the full-time position. We'd like to do him the part-time. That'd be all right.
Sure.
And his pay will go with the part-time pay as well?
Yeah, part-time pay as well.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make that in form of motion.
Well, you're happy with the work. Anything else, please?
Street committee, I'm going to go ahead and have Keith present some things about the contractors we're trying to take care of.
We didn't get all this done here until after the committee report was standing up. This is for the asphalt streets out in Brightacre in order to get McFarland and Neal done. We're pushing a close timeframe, getting these two done right out as it is. We had two contractors originally bid on it and when they were contacted, only one of them was interested in doing it. He said he could probably get down here and get one of them done anyway. It would be three separate projects. The first project would be to widen Neal Street to 20 feet wide at the base rock there like we discussed. And then put three inches of asphalt on top of it. And that project would be $69,0759. Then the next project would be to widen McFarland Street 20 feet wide, right, put the base rock on to raise it up. And then that would be the second project for 2023. That'd be $35,290. Then they said they'd come back. First thing, when it's warm next year, 2024, we keep the same price that they gave us for this and lay the three inches of asphalt over that base for $63,206. It all comes up to all total 168,25590 for Neal and McFarland, turning heat.
Did you have another bid? You said in the back panel?
Did beginning, but after we rebid it, the second time.
What was the bid? Was it higher or lower?
Ah, but it was for pretty much a completely different project. Every time we rebid this, it's been something different. So they just said that they had things going on and they already been down there a couple of times. And if it's all the same, uh, it would pass.
Both have two bids or?
Are they three separate projects?
It's three separate projects. They'll be doing Neal Street will be one project. And then widening and putting the base down on McFarland will be another project. And that'll be all the good for this year. Then 2024, they'll come back and put three inches of stuff on McFarland.
So we'll need, so we'll need to approve them separately.
Yes, but it will still be the same price for the asphalt, they said.
But what, when you want to.
But the weather is going to be a big factor there. So we just decided it'd be better to wait until next year when the weather's better. We had got into a thing before where we tried to get something down rushed in the cooler, wet weather. That didn't really turn out all that great. And we're only talking a few months anyway before it started warming back up for a four months.
This project would be hauling an extensive amount of gravel and building the base.
Yes.
It's not just a layover. It's, it's a gravel project too, correct?
Yes, they will be hauling in base, widening the road, hauling in base and then overlaying Neal this year.
We have the winter to let them drive on it and help us compact it a little bit.
You did say wide. Are the neighbors aware of this?
20 foot wide. Right now, there's spots that are 15, maybe 16. And we should be able to get 20 foot down through there.
Are the residents aware of this?
Well, it still should not go back past where we all graded. I mean, at the, at the time, it had been graded, moved out, kind of got over in the road. So, yeah, we will. It's nothing we've not done before when we graded.
So that's why it's plated. Everything's plated out there. Everything's plated, and those streets will be plated probably 25 feet.
Yes, so we, yeah, we've got to ease it there. But it won't put, it'll put them just right back through the mailbox, right at the mailbox on most of it. So that's one thing we make sure we didn't interfere with mailboxes or anything that that had been moved. There might have been one down through there. He said if it had been moved, they would do it while they were doing it. Said when they left, it'd be good.
Any more questions?
It's a, it's a dirt road right now. It's unpaid. It's gravel.
This is one of the, two of the streets out in, or roads out in Brightacre.
Just to bother me, just having to know about standards because there's multiple standards out there.
Randy, I'm pretty sure that, I'd have to look. There was a different contract completely because this is like the second or third change we made that had more specifics in there. And I think each time this road, it was done a little bit quicker to try to get this done this year. So I can check. I don't, I don't know exactly what we're going to do. I think there's like a, Mary, you, did you have standards?
B M P two?
B M P two is for overlay. B M P three is for something like this for gravel.
Robertson's using B, B, B M P two on all their, on all their, they're using the same type asphalt for all, overlay and also new road. Atlas, Atlas, the other, the higher bidder used two different types, one and two. And that's, that's as far as I know about building.
So the second bid, you said it was for something different?
The second one there going to widen McFarland and put the base down.
This is of the three bids.
And that's all they're doing.
And for Neal Street, I, I don't know anything about how long it takes asphalt to cure. So we're in like middle of hours. So the weather's not going to be in issue.
No, it'll be, it probably, well, depending on the weather, I mean, will depend on what time of day they start. Sometimes when it gets cool, they can start till like 10 o'clock or so. On the work till 2:00 or 3:00, but usually when they leave, it's ready to drive, I'm ready to go.
Any other discussion?
I'm trying to figure out why we didn't bid the same projects with the two different contractors. So we changed things. If we changed things, we should give the other contractor the opportunity.
We did. They did not. They weren't interested.
They didn't want to respond.
Yeah, I contacted all of them personally and they, of the four contractors, two said they were not interested in doing any work this year.
The committee meeting was discussed, was, there was not a pre-bid meeting, more or less, beforehand to explain the road, what, what the committee wanted. And so they asked Keith to meet with both contractors to, out on the job site, explain what we wanted. And that's when you told me the one backed out. The higher bidder actually backed out.
Yes.
They weren't able to even do anything till next year because their asphalt plan was not operational till next year.
I understand. And they were $100,000 difference?
They were significantly higher, high enough to where I even called them myself and questioned it because I'm like, what's?
And one of the reasons that Robertson was so cheaper, much cheaper, was because they are trying to keep their own guys working through the winter. They said they were not losing money, but they were not making as much as normal trying, just trying to keep them busy because they had a good crew and they wanted to have them there next year. Or that it wouldn't have been that cheap during the summertime.
We, we had two bids, but when we rebid it, the highest bidder wouldn't come back and rebid it again.
Same thing on the concrete. We had two concrete bids too, and when they were contacted, one of them declined to put in another bid.
You're talking about the information that was sent out to us in the text, where the, there was multiple streets in there? We got, we got some information some time back and there was over $235,000 worth of difference between bids.
So you know. It may have been, yes, for the asphalt before, before this one, probably so. Yeah, there was a big difference in, in price.
So we weren't bidding on apples, apples.
No, there were. So, well, now that's the thing, like the mayor was talking about, the, the pre, pre-bid meeting, they were all told in the bid package to contact me, to go out on the job, to look at the job, to see what we wanted. None of them did that. One, one contractor, Robertson contacted me by phone and asked me a few questions while he was at H Street. None of them came and got with me and went out on the job with me and looked at everything we wanted. So they basically, no, I would say they were measuring from what we had written down on the paper from, I, I don't know. They, when you get through that street, they could have went five feet farther than we did, which could have been 10 feet farther than the other contractor did. Because we measure them and both contractors measure them. So, no, that's why the second time, they, I personally called these contractors and said, if you're interested, you need to meet with me and go out on the job site. So I think we can show you exactly what we want done.
You said that you had a contract with Robertson that we don't have?
Uh, this is just the one they got here that where they did that. When we told them, after we went out and talked to them and showed them what we wanted, that's what they sent back.
Again, it, it just says three inches of asphalt. Is there, I mean, there's no, no got standard listed?
And that was, is probably on the other contract, or the other bid thing that we had with, I'm assuming. We can get, I can get with them tomorrow and find out exactly what their mix is or. It would be nice to know though.
Instead of loan the project down and you make a proposal, I would like to add that we have Smith and Company pull a sample at the plant, a sample on the street to know what we're getting.
That'd be a good idea, so good.
I have a question. In the, in the minutes from last time, it said when we opened the Robertson bid, it was eighty-three thousand, eight fifty-five? And this is one sixty-eight, did we add something else in?
This is a completely different project.
Completely different from what we talked about a couple weeks ago.
The last thing that they bid on were several streets, overlays and new streets. This is strictly two streets.
Okay.
Turnkey operation, completely different.
The first bid was no gravel, just there to go like asphalt down wherever, whatever's underneath there. This one they're supposed to build a base.
Okay.
And the other one was some of the streets were for inch and a half overlay over, or the streets are already there. And this will strictly be for two new streets, turnkey, gravel, never rain.
Any other discussions? So you all asked, have requests of the type of material. Do you all want to wait or what, what do you all want to do?
Move forward with it. My choice, but to have sample pulled out the plant, pour sample back, take it out and lay it down.
Of what? Now, I'm not opposed to, just asking of what?
Of asphalt. I mean, they will actually go out to the plant and pull the sample and test it, see what stand, you know, what it means, what standard it means.
It doesn't meet a certain standard, what, what are you?
I mean, if, if, if we got it somewhere where they're bidding B P two, that's fine. If it's anything less than that, I don't think they ought, we ought, we ought to lay it down.
Okay.
Commercial grade mix isn't what we need.
Not opposed, I'm just trying to get clarification, so we know how to proceed.
Okay.
Do you think you, do you, do you all okay with that?
I, I am, yeah. I mean, I think it's a good idea to pull the sample. We have, yeah, we have in the past and I, I think it's a good idea to do every time we bid, we make that.
We need to pull the sample, keep it honest.
I mean, we used to.
No, just for record keeping to say, we did it and this is what it was. For the future, if this goes south on us, we can say, hey, we did the best we could.
Absolutely.
I agree one hundred percent.
And Terry, is there a bid to go with just one bid then? Okay, just wanna make sure. Do we have to bid, we have to go on three different?
Yes, it's three different projects.
Okay. So, looks like discussions coming to an end. We have a motion to approve project number one.
With modification.
Yeah, with that.
With, with the test.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion for that?
Motion.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Second. Discussion on approving project number one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. We have a motion to approve project number two.
Motion.
Motion.
With modification.
With modification.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Yes. And project number three, this will complete, McFarland and Neal Street.
With motion.
With a motion.
With modification.
With modification. Second, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes.
And all that's coming out of transportation.
Yeah, same.
Just wanna make sure.
Yes.
That's been approved, so go ahead and bring light that project.
Okay. And Randy, I do, I have got a paper on what those specs are. They sent me one, I asked the one they sent me one, I will get that and get that through you.
I said, when the project's complete, give council a full update on that and how the thing turned out.
Yeah, we definitely do that. Uh, the only other thing we got is uh, Melissa, you want to take that?
There we go.
Well, we're gonna, Keith, we're gonna deal with North End or North Jackson.
North Jackson? Uh, what, what, doing the concrete thing? We're doing the concrete right now at uh, Fort Washington.
What, up to Washington, yeah.
Oh, no, we have not, oh yeah, I'm sorry. We haven't got the bid back on that yet. I have not heard from them, couldn't get hold them today. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the, what we're working on. Haven't heard from the contractor on the, the concrete yet.
Our, our next project is North Jackson from Washington to Tatum.
Yes.
Where we did the section, yeah. And that'll be concrete and that can be done this time of year as well.
And that's gonna be two projects also, right?
No, that'll be four projects.
Four projects.
Yeah, one of them will be stormwater. Uh, I think the third one in and possibly some stormwater in the second one. But the first and second won't be.
And would you please, um, uh, if you haven't already done such, would you please notify C L G W? That, that, that road's gonna be North Jackson, we're gonna, we're gonna take that fully out. So there might be anything under, underneath, be a good time to access it.
Yeah, I haven't, because we haven't heard from the contractor. If he, they can do it this year. I thought we would heard from them.
It's got some good news though. Let's go.
Yeah, positive, I took it from you.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's good, you're good.
We've got some positive news. So you might remember back in August, we had a public hearing regarding the transportation alternatives program. And the city council agreed to pursue an application for a Floyd Street sidewalk connection project. And Mr. Westerfield and I are happy to announce that we have been awarded that project. Uh, M O D O awarded us the eighty percent funding that we requested. The total project is four hundred, two thousand, eight hundred, fifty dollars. The federal cost share that the city of Kent will receive is three hundred, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. This was officially announced uh, November first. We have twenty-four months to complete the project, so it must be completed by November first, two thousand, twenty-five. There's something for the council to do today, but celebrate. We will have project agreements that have to be completed in a resolution to move forward. And Mr. Westerfield will contact M O D O so that we can begin the procurement and bidding process. Uh, so that's great news, that's a great project for our community. And my encouragement moving forward was there's going to be another round of this funding next year. Because Ken, I have this funding, you know, that I work for the county. I imagine that other county towns will have uh, interest in pursuing that too. But I would encourage the city of Kent to consider other transportation alternative programs to apply for next year. You have lots of sidewalks in the city, some of them probably haven't been repaired in many, many years. And you're not gonna get a better rate than twenty cents on the dollar. So I would encourage the street committee to consider now, projects that you might like to apply for next August. Because if you do that, you can go ahead and get those designed, get the engineering work planned and then have a proper application by next August that hopefully will be awarded again if you decide to pursue that.
Very good, very good work. Um, now, Keith, Blue Hill Regional is coordinator, they're doing, they're, they're.
No, the Dunkland County Economic Development Office wrote the grant, uh, B R P C submitted it on our behalf. Because uh, most transportation projects have to be arranged there, so it had to pass the uh, TAC committee's recommendation at the R P C. But the L P A is Keith Westerfield and the Dunkland County Economic Development Office drafted that.
And no cost?
No cost.
That's always great, that's uh, always good. Great, thank you all, thank you.
Thank you.
I think you deserve a good job.
Very good job, good job, good job. We need to allocate the eighty thousand.
You do not say, you already did that.
We already did that.
We will in the future prob, maybe the next councilman will have the agreement that you'll need to pass a resolution for.
All right, thank you very much. Um, Palmer, you have a floor as far as the street committee, anything else?
No, we've got, okay.
I think we've got all the, any of the committee? Okay, department reports, anything needs to talk about in the departments? I see a bunch of shaking face ahead, so we're gonna move right along. Unfinished business, I don't may, um, this, this uh, this. I said the G N.
I've been called many things. Okay, so, um, on September, you know, nothing new. On September nineteenth, you all approved, this is uh, the lease payments for survival plot to be applied to the fire station loan. And last week, Mr. Panosis indicated that maybe you all thought, rethought that and wanted to invest that money in a higher interest account. And so I just asked him that, since it's on the record that the council voted that these payments go to the loan, the council needs to decide, you wanna continue to do that? Or if you want to change it, then you need to make the motion and then you need to change that.
What interest rate are we paying on the fire station?
Two point nine, no, we're paying two point nine five on the fire station. We owe a little over two million dollars and we are paying um, two point four five on the trucks, which is, seems in reverse, but, and that rate is two point four five. So the interest rate's lower on the trucks than it is on the station. You know, the thought process, Chief Davis can tell me if I'm correct or not. With building that new fire station was, the compressed loan payments were ten thousand dollars a month. Survival plot lease payments were going to be twenty-five hundred a month, so that's twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. So while the city incurred additional debt, but we did, we're not incurring additional monthly expenditures because we paid off the compressed loan. So again, I'm, I'm neutral on this out here, I just need, I wanna put it and it needs to match whatever our records say they're gonna do it.
Dave, you can, we can put that same five, we pay three percent, or you can put that same five in a interest earned account, or a five percent, what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
I like your proposal.
Honestly, I don't care, um, we just need to, our actions need to match our words because, well, period, that needs to stay. And every one of these groups, they don't just look at numbers, they look at our policies and procedures and are we following those? You guys said they asked.
So.
Discussion.
So the question, everybody understand what we're doing, what we're talking about, please? So.
Can we make money on payment?
You can make money off, you get two percent.
Roughly two percent.
And they would not have paid me after all of this. Do that.
Okay.
That's just a while.
I think it's ten thousand dollars a year.
I think it's like, well, you have to go.
Five a month?
Currently have seventy-five hundred dollars.
Our funds have to be fully insured, there's certain procedures to have to do, but we have to contract by.
I think a sixteen, seventeen.
A year.
A year.
And uh, so after, you know, there's a little misperception there, um, when, at the la, the public hearing where Mitzi Dell was talking about, as soon as the pay request that was at the state at that time, after that had been approved, then there would be another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and so that, oh. So everybody thought, oh my gosh, we're gonna have a million dollars. No, that's not the case, that pay request was over seven hundred thousand dollars. So Mr. Panosis and I had sifted pretty closely on, the loan was three point three, but we just had one point nine as far. So there should be around seventy thousand dollars left in that loan account, you know, checking account. Uh, so you can be thinking about what you might wanna do there too.
Mr. Look, what do you say a year we can, we can make off that?
We're bringing in twenty-five hundred a month, that's three thousand, we're gonna make seventeen hundred dollars a year. Five point five.
It's all been sixteen hundred dollars a year. So.
Or you can make the payment and you.
So, what do you all want to do?
And what would we do with the interest, where does that go? Have we asked that before?
Yeah, whatever I figure. Down revenue.
It's just posted to that account. As when the bank payment's coming in to do reconciliation, I don't, I don't know what the interest is for a different statement. And then there's a spot on that bank reconciliation that you post the interest to it and you tell it what, what type of interest.
So right now, it's going into lowest payment. Once you all wanna make a motion to change it, we can do that. Is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second? Uh, is everybody clear what we're discussing here? Okay, discussion?
So, all we have to do, if, if the vote passes, change verbiage.
Yes, yes, I mean, when you, if you pass something new, then we follow the new direction.
But once the rates, if the rates go back down, I don't know, if we were not, then we'll, we'll put that lump sum right over into the payment.
I think we're in it.
So we need to open a new, I'll, I'll check the rates and we'll open a, you know, I'll get back with the finance committee and the finance committee can make the decision on, we open a new account and.
We'll leave that up to the finance committee.
Yes, exactly, that's fair, yeah, all I'll do is get the rate.
So, any more discussion on the motion to?
We'll have some other accounts that there's some extra money in, we might want them.
We're gonna move some, some money onto interest bearing accounts unless you all have opposition to free money.
So right, right now, we're taking the, the rent money, I don't know, fire station?
We haven't done anything with it, Mr. Swain, because.
There's seventy-five hundred dollars.
It was kind of, yeah, well, so far we had seventy-five hundred dollars, we're gonna pay twenty, right now they're paying monthly, uh, Chief Davis.
File that one up.
They may pay yearly, so that'd be fine. Uh, we, our stormwater tax account, stormwater senior citizen tax fund is an interest bearing account. The uh, transportation tax fund is currently an interest bearing account. And the capital projects fund, which houses all of the reserve accounts, that is currently an interest bearing account. None of those acc, those rates are less than one percent, that one percent or less, so that's something. But those, that's, that's a big hun, awesome.
Let's finish the motion and we'll discuss this.
Okay.
You had something you wanna say?
Call for a question.
I thought you had something you wanted to discuss.
Oh, I wanna discuss this.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
So we wanna vote on the thing at ten, because this doesn't have anything to do with.
I agree, I agree, that's what I said, you wanted to ask a question on that.
I'll call for a question, okay, I'll call for the vote.
Okay, anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
All right, gotta follow up on Ben. I think we need to explore and turn it over to the clerk's office to explore uh, CD rates and money market rates and then what we're gonna invest. The proper accounts, the check, the charity, I mean, I know some of them are okay, but before we do, uh, to see what we can get in interest bearing accounts.
Like that's already in the process.
It's already in the process.
Step ahead of you on that one, okay.
And, and for your information, the banks are required. Uh, anything that exceeds the F D I C limits, banks are required to keep securities on hand, you know, be invested so that if something happened to the bank, the city's money or anybody, any other depositors' money, that exceeded the F D I C. But the city government money especially is covered.
And Terry's gonna check on that.
Yeah, but it, but definitely that is part of, part of the requirements.
Yeah, I mean, they currently do that now with our current.
The funds be completely insured and, and like I said, banks do that now anyway.
We check that back in March.
Yes, yes.
On the financial situation. Okay, uh, if there's nothing else discussed, I guess.
No, I don't matter.
Unless you've got something.
No, I got something else, but that's in our new business.
All right, well, stick to the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am, thank you. All right, new business. Um, it's getting that time of year where we need to think about ballots and recreational marijuana tax. I believe we got some numbers in and if we had the tax um, in place, there'd be an extra thirty thousand dollars a month coming off the three percent. They projected a hundred and eighty thousand dollars would have been in the past six months. So I think it'd be wise of us to consider putting this on the ballot. We need to vote a council to make that happen.
That's big, Terry, the ordinance, putting it on the ballot, calling for the election, special election in April.
Sounds good, we'll do that.
I mean, I'll have, I'll have the ordinance ready and the ballot proposal.
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
Isn't it, it, we have a regular election in April anyway, right?
Yes, but, but since this is not part of the general election, it's a special election.
Okay, thank you.
Any opposition to that?
We'll vote on it next time.
All right, um, let's make a rap, Smith and Company, France Property Cleanup.
So, uh, Ms. Ellis had emailed each of you a copy of the contract with Smith and Company. Mike Walker is here, so if you have any technical questions about this, uh, to decipher abbreviations or anything like that. But they have an excellent reputation, the budget is gonna be within once the council approves. Uh, this is a three-year, I'll say three years. All the work, all the payments. All the work, all the payments and all the reporting on this have to be completed by September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six. So, as soon as this contract gets approved, it has been reviewed by the Department of Economic Development, uh and this is a community revitalization grant and um and then Mr. Ravae has reviewed it. I'll say Mike is here, if you all have any questions, but then they're ready to hit the ground running.
We have a motion to approve the agreement.
Motion.
Motion's second, we have second, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
And the only, the only thing, I gave you all something, it's not on the agenda, so we don't, it's what I have to talk about tonight, but it's maybe uh changed to our credit card procedures. And so if you all want to read that, visit, you know, whatever, and then we can discuss it.
Thank you. In your pocket, you, on item C, you have a solid waste agreement between your contract between CLGW and City Penn.
You know, at the last meeting, you all, certain few ordinances, which uh have responsibility of, of collecting solid waste, residential solid waste to uh CLGW. This is a contract uh to reflect that and, and the agreement is, is important because CLGW will be spending opious amounts of money and will have to finance some of that money and for them to finance any of the, of the expansion and the new project. The lenders will require, will require that they have a contract and contract for a few years. And that's true of any, uh any organization or uh on a project like this. And that's what this con, that's what this agreement is for itself.
Do we have a motion to approve this agreement? We have a motion, we have a close second, maybe?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion.
I, I don't know that we've had a chance to review this yet, it's an eleven-page legal document that we got at four fifteen this afternoon, I was still at work, I don't know about anyone else, but I haven't had a chance to review it. And I, I support the CLGW decision, but I, I really am reluctant to vote on anything I haven't had a chance to read.
Any more comments?
We have a problem if we, uh is it going to put CLGW in a bad spot if we don't approve at this meeting, wait till the next meeting?
Daniel Loz, are we on duty?
We're, we're uh meeting with the architect and engineer tomorrow morning to discuss some things, I don't know that, I mean, there will be bill, we will be billed for that, we've incurred some debt already on our legal fees, so um yeah, it's not going to keep us from moving forward, if that's, if that's what you mean, so it's kind of more of a, a protection thing and, and allowing us to make sure everything was in order. But I mean, two weeks from now would hurt my feelings at all.
Two weeks, what was that last comment?
It would hurt my feelings at all if you waited, if I think we waited two weeks.
Mr. Loz, you want to table it?
I, I, yes, do I need to make a motion to table it, I'm sorry, I don't know.
So we can um, we can decline the motion and move to table it, if you also heard to do that.
We will, yeah, table it.
Draw, draw. We'll draw the motion.
We'll draw the motion.
Yeah, we'll draw the second.
Yes. Yes.
Then we'll just put it on the agenda.
For uh old business. Okay, we'll do that to old business. All right, um I'm the, not on your, we had the chamber, I had to request the electric bid.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, um we're getting into our busy season. Um this past, uh this past Friday night, we had a, a wonderful, I apologize about my voice, we, I had triple soccer this past weekend, so y'all have kids, um yeah, so my voice has started to crack on me. Um but anyway, we had a great, great event with the Cheryl Crowell Walk Party. Um but one of the things that I'm here tonight is to ask the city to allocate six hundred dollars for that event. Um we had received the request um after the council meeting, um it's always the way the timing and, and the nature of the event and the small request, um the tourism committee met and we agreed that it fell into guidelines and everything. Um but we're, I'm here tonight asking, I'm sure that, you know, we can.
It is coming out of the tourism?
Yes, it would come out of tourism, so.
I'll make a motion for a second.
I'll second.
The motion for a second, it's to approve the ten thousand dollar expenditure of tourism, that's sixty. All right, six hundred dollars, motion's second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
I'm extending because I was an organ actor also.
Thank you guys. Um the second thing that I'm here for tonight um is I'm actually seeking uh ten thousand.
That's the one.
Yeah. What this is for, um the solar eclipse that's coming up on April the eighth of two thousand twenty-four, um it's part of a matching grant um that, that came through from the Missouri Department of Tourism. Um it's a, it's only limited to counties and cities that are in the viewing area. And the grant, uh we found out is a first come, first served basis. Um and so um the grant have, the deadline for it technically was on November the thirtieth. Um but because of the way the funding was and everything, we, I received a call from the state um saying that if we wanted to, if we wanted to go through with this, they needed it before October the twenty-seventh.
How much is the grant for?
The grant would be for uh twenty-three, twenty-three thousand seven hundred.
And we've got to match it with ten thousand?
Yeah.
Where's that money going to come from?
Uh the tourism.
Twenty-nine thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars.
Say that again, I was looking.
Twenty-nine, I, I can, I'll start to read your mind.
Yeah.
Uh twenty-nine thousand five sixty-eight.
Yeah, so we're taking ten six out of that. It's coming out of tourism, it's not affecting us anywhere else.
But this is a, this is one of the, one in my lifetime event, because the next time this is going to come around will be in, where Kent will be in total darkness, will be um twenty-seventy-eight.
Well, you're not going to be around that?
I'll, I'll be ninety, so unless, I, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to. Right, but uh, but this would allow us to have an event over that weekend. Um would include, would allow us to have entertainment for there, similar to what some of the other towns are doing, say in Popper Bluff and Jonesboro, um it's a way to bring in tourism, we're hoping, expecting up to at least, you know, twelve, fifteen thousand on top of what we've already got. Um some of the larger cities that's in the viewing area of Popper Bluff, Jonesboro, they're in view time of four minutes. Um we're in view time of two minutes, two minutes and fifteen seconds of total darkness. Um and so overflow, the expectation is overflow from those cities coming to here. Um yeah, and so it's just, you know, another way to get people here to spend, to spend for tax dollars and stuff, so.
You've got an eclipse committee, they put the budget together for twenty-three thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got a budget?
Yes, yes, uh I do have one, uh it, it's just kind of a preliminary, I don't know if anyone can see that or not.
You can give us a copy later on.
Okay.
You've got, you've, you're already planning events for last, is that correct?
Yeah, we're in the process of planning events and merchandise and stuff we'll get from the chamber.
Got our glasses already?
We've already got our glasses, uh the chamber's already put uh on the website, on our chamber website, we have a countdown clock uh listing a, a lot of the merchants. Um and then that's going to be a place for us to have for activities, you know, to, going forward. Um and then leading up to it, from, starting from now till there, uh there's go, there's press releases, there's things, there are educational opportunities um as far as with the school, uh STEM programs. Um so there, there's a lot of different things to bring awareness to it. Uh this past month, I did a, uh did a safety day uh at South School and we talked about sun safety and the importance of when you go to view the eclipse of having the glasses, uh because you can also, you can ruin your eyes and you can also ruin your uh camera on your phone, uh or, or an actual camera. So anyway, that decided the point.
So the, the allocation, if you so choose to do such, uh we were three thousand in the hole last year, we spent more than we've taken in. This will also change some allocation later in the year, so just be mindful of that also when you approve it, so that other events might not be getting funded as much or at all.
Right.
I was just going to say, uh the, the Fair Board, I talked to Commander Greenway about this early on, Chamber, the Legion, a partnership, Chamber, Legion, Fair Board, JCs and City, and the City, especially the airport. Your big ones has talked to the airport board and some of the pilots and they're excited about some things they can do. Um Chamber's taking care of anything that might happen on the Legion property and then, you know, but we're trying to help coordinate just those weekend events.
Okay.
But, Chamber's in charge.
All right, let's put forth the motion, if there is one to be, to approve or not. We have a motion to approve.
You, you said that the deadline was end of October, so you've already submitted.
You said November thirty, you meant October.
Yeah, but the tourism committee went ahead and submitted the grant application. Now, if it's not approved, we would just have to pull the application, so.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion if you support it.
I'll second.
We have a second. Discussion. Okay, more discussion. All in favor of the motion to spend ten thousand dollars out of tourism tax for the eclipse for the Chamber grant, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
That motion passes.
Um last thing, uh kind of give you all an update on tourism report. Um we processed the uh following the arts uh reimbursement. Uh we placed ads for the winter and fall ads for Missouri Life and the Show Me, Show Me, Show Me Missouri Magazine, everyone spit it out there. Um then also this weekend, uh there is a Kennedy Holiday Open House, so kind of kicking off the, off the holiday season. Um there are certain stores that, that are going to be open special hours from five to eight on Saturday and then on Sunday from one to four-thirty. Um so the stores, they'll launch merchandise and have, and possibly have, you know, deals and stuff going on for, for customers. Um if there's anyone who would like to, that isn't in that list, if they want to be involved, contact the, contact the Chamber as soon as possible. Um two weeks from now, we are going to have another opportunity uh to promote small business. It's Small Business Saturday, that's going to be on November the twenty-fifth. Um if, if there are stores that's wanting to participate in that, contact the Chamber. I've already reached out to several and maybe the ones that had done it last year, they're on board for it again this year. Um and then I also have merchandise to give to them so they can, so they can advertise and everything. Uh the other thing, on December the fifth, um there's several groups, we're having a holiday festival that's downtown. Uh they have lots of activities for kids, uh and adults, uh it's just going to be a great community event. Um so hopefully have a great, praying for good weather. Um but tree lighting, ceremony, uh decorations, a ton of, a ton of activities, so it's a, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be awesome. Uh something else coming up, um I know we haven't made it to Thanksgiving, but we're, we're on Christmas, so um the Chamber, we're going to be hosting a, another Christmas, a, a Christmas contest for the businesses to participate in. Uh and then we're also doing a, a yard decorating contest and then there will be more details coming on that in the future, uh here in the next week or so. Um so any other, any of the other, you know, things that's going on tonight, if people's got questions, contact the Chamber and we'll get you, we'll get you taken care of. Uh and then as far as the little contests and all that stuff, that'll be put out online and social media, so, and the newspaper, so.
Thank you, Dave.
That's all I have, thank you guys, I appreciate you.
Sounds like some great times to head over the next couple of months.
Before we get to public comments, um let's say we will not be, we have a scheduled meeting for December fifth. I probably, we will postpone or cancel that particular meeting due to the activities downtown, or we'll have one meeting for the month of December. Um also, street closure, PD's agreed, we'll need assistance on that, that evening, I would imagine, sometime, I don't have time for it yet, but the square. And there's also a question about if the highway could actually be closed, what the procedure of that would be.
Not by us.
Uh, is that, so you.
I think they'll hit P M O dot, they have to close there, they're pretty picky about it.
I figured so, but the question was asked of me, so I, I didn't know how to answer it, so.
They don't like to close it for emergencies. They'll give you an emergency, but they give you a timeframe of what they want it pretty much opened back up by.
I was going to say, I think, I think they allow you to, because the whole kind of parade and the Delta Fair Parade, so, but I can, I can check with M O dot if you'd like to.
Please do, if they let this brown though?
Yes, I would.
All right, uh public comments, we have a packed house. Mr. Love?
Yep. If you don't lock me now, you're going to hate me when I get there. It is a promise. I contacted Jay Turner, Director of Sunshine Law Compliance on the number two. Concerning an email I had sent to the city board, mentioned for the city budget, July seventeenth, never received, wasn't ever received. Second issue was out on October seventeenth at Harps, two city councilmen, Jim Chester, Tony Sparks, Don Collins, all meeting at a table in public. Uh there was a citizen that observed this, overheard parts of the conversations, that kind of bored city business. Uh Mr. Turner said that this was questionable compliance and that if city business was discussed, minutes should have been taken. We don't know what happened, I'm, I'm just laying it out, I'm not filing no complaints. The third one is the sanitation committee, Mr. Mayor, he was here when I started, I don't believe there was anyone present to take notes, nobody to record, or anything out there, but you had mentioned about uh. You had mentioned about, uh, something was brought up, you was gonna have to put it up, you know, vote on it, discussion, things of that nature, but nobody to record. The meeting was fifty, pushed back fifteen minutes, state law says you have to show good cause why that meeting was pushed back, and at the beginning of the meeting, you had to say the date, time, and the just cause, that falls well under the, uh, Sunshine Law.
You mean pushed back or pushed up?
Pushed back.
And your notes here says from five-thirty to five-fifteen.
Well, it went from, well, the meeting was four, five-thirty. It's right. It's pushed back to five-fifteen, which resulted in a crowd that was smaller than usual. This is the third issue on theirs for you to look at, bidding process? And I've attached an email. The next thing's on this, um, the trash. Myself as a citizen, I cannot for the life of me figure out why these council meetings have gone into disarray. You weren't here when you left the last meeting, it all went to hell in a bad.
Oh, the council meeting, that's just the, the trash meeting.
So, I had some questions, and number one was, is trash a utility in Missouri? Question is, yes it is. So, how does City Light and Water get past RSMO two-six-zero-two-one-five, section five? Any state or county which establishes a service of solid waste shall not state the, the charge separately from any other charge of any kind. No city or like the public works meeting there present that question, you mentioned, you said you had to look into it, that's what the RSMO says. The other one is, do citizens have a right to vote on that? Some say yes, some say no. And that's caused a lot of uproar, this was voted on in two thousand thirteen, voted down, um, so we got to start somewhere. One of my questions is, we accept, or the city accepted Sharps bid, and to present a contract, and they presented a contract, what was the reason the city rejected the contract, because I don't know, a lot of people don't know.
Never presented a contract.
Never presented a contract, okay. Now, um, if it wasn't presented, then why wasn't, why wasn't it up for revision? Because according, according to the statute, if you reject all bids, even after accepting a bid, then you shall revive the, the matter at hand. So, whether that's that shall, or if you should, that's up for interpretation.
Well, at, at that time, the city decided, the city council decided, uh, not to have a single bidder, not to put, looking for the city not to go and visit, so there wasn't being a reason, because it wasn't being a contract.
Okay, so, we went to Sharps, or the city wanted to go to Sharps to vote originally to pick up Citywide, and I understand what that reason was, was to cut down on trucks in the city, that's what I took from it. So, what's the purpose of C-Lab and Water, is it to save three million dollars like Townie Sparks says, or is it to bring a hospital here? There's so many things being said that, because I, I, I watched the recorded meeting, and I tell you what, I couldn't make heads or tails of anything.
I mentioned the hospital, just because I'm hard in negotiation, we've tried.
That is correct, that is correct.
To get them to come in, which is looking very positive, by the way, so I just would like our city to look good and show that we're progressive.
Well, I understand that, but what I want to get at is, why keep getting businesses out on the east end of town, when we should get them on First Street, I mean, and, you know, but once, you know, you remember when Walmart Supercenter come here, what happened to the squares, I mean, everything started to vanish. And little shops popped up, and that's some people made it, some people did, and that's the concern, if we get building out, out east, and, you know, we're gonna have like all these other towns, they have all their business on one side of town, everything else they forget about. So, the trash ordinance, does ordinance as it reads require code enforcement to write tickets? Does it say code enforcement shall write the ticket? Because there's a difference, there's a difference, the, the state and the government allows officers to, officer discretion, so that, I mean, is that what it reads, that they shall ticket?
There's no, there, there's no instance where there is a officer discretion.
Okay.
There's always.
There's always officer discretion, because people under the, under the, under the opinion that, well, I have my brother, he goes in, leaves work at three, in the morning, don't get home till seven, and if he gets a ticket, you know, it's because he worked fourteen, fifteen hours.
And has he gotten a ticket?
No, 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 because, I mean, he loses yard.
There's always, as, as in any other, any other law, and in enforcement of any law, there's always officer discretion.
Other than netty violence or whatever else, there's always.
Always some type, there's always some type of law for that discretion.
So, in that, you know, a person's defense could be that this ordinance is overreaching or places an undue burden on the taxpayer. Now, with that being said, that's something we're going to face later on down the road. You know, if I'm a, you know, a, that could be a single individual, or it could be a, a lawsuit against the city. If I have to worry about getting my trash, because believe it or not, when Sharps gives my trash, I don't know if it's two and one or two and a half, no. And it's, that's, that's what people are worried about, they're worried about, we're going to get tickets for this, and why did, why did City like C-Lab get to take over while I wasn't there to vote? That's what people are asking, but none of this, none of this been answered.
Well, I can answer a couple of those, one, people aren't going to be getting, the, the ticket situation isn't going to change.
Right. I don't want, I don't deserve that.
Yeah, that, that's not going to change. You're going to write tickets whenever you're in violation of, of the ordinance, and if you have, if you have trash in your yard, or if you're not getting your trash removed, you're going to get a ticket.
Right.
That, that's the way it is now, that's, that's the way it's going to stay.
Right, right.
So.
So then, how do you get past the collection, like, if, if you get people there in the winter months, they can't pay, have propane or electric bill, the city like has more to spend the trash services, maybe they can't afford that extra sixteen dollars, or whatever.
Well, if, if that's just not what we're going to have to draw at that time.
Would, would, would that be with an ordinance, or is that going to be with?
I don't know.
I want to ask that, because that's what, that's what the state law says.
I understand, I understand exactly what two-sixty, uh, two-fifteen says.
Okay, this is the other thing, so I listened to the reporting, and watched it as closely as I could, this concerns, County, are you in charge of the Board of Public Works?
No.
Okay, who is it?
I think the board is.
Our board, the Board of Public Works. Who's in charge of it?
Maybe the Board of Public Works is in charge.
John, I mean, is there one person that's in chief?
No.
The, the president of the board is John Robertson.
Yeah.
I think that's who you're looking for.
All right, so, from this meeting, and I'm taking this from the video. Electric rate for people.
Which, which meeting?
Please. Last trash meeting, when Marco Parr got kicked out.
Oh, yeah, Marco Parr got crazy, got kicked out.
Yeah, that meeting. Mr. Sparks, I'm not understanding your questions, with the Forest County and the state, we've got the fourth lowest electric rate, fourth lowest, why can't it be higher? Is that what you're asking? The citizens.
Hold on, hold on, what are, what are we doing, what are you talking about? I'm lost now.
Okay, I'm, I'm filling you in on what you didn't hear when you were on.
Okay, okay.
I'm talking about the actions that up the board, City like C-Lab, and City Council.
Okay, sanitation committee, please.
For everybody to respect.
Okay, all right.
And, um, you know, citizens say, you know, well, that's not what I'm asking for, and that's when you had to excuse yourself for a police committee, Aaron Gass, Kevin Swain, Mr. Bellis, Joe Higley. Del Macai had a question, question about the dumpster for the Eastview Apartments. Mr. Chister, we will change the dumpster fee, you will pay the City like C-Lab and Water, Mr. Macai will, so we wouldn't have an option to stay private, we'd have to go with E. And then, Mr. Chister says, at a lower rate, I mean, I can see why you would have a problem paying less. And the plan I want to make to this, then Mr. Macai says, well, how come no one has the people at Kennet what they want, and it all went financial, nobody could get a ticket. The next one, Mr. Sparks, we toured a transfer station, noticed it didn't smell, and they said, this is what we do and how it's done, citizens says that's what they do. So, County says, so, and there's a pause, what's humorous to me with you arguing the rest of the audible, taking it, making it personal? Mr. Chister says, Lord, you went to vote on this eight months ago, when the council voted to go over the bid, that was three million dollars more. Rest of the bill, and I'll book it, everybody's right. Now to the last quarter. Mr. Palmer, people have known me for over forty years, if I am not known as somebody honest, I shouldn't be here still. And an unknown citizen says, well, you shouldn't be here. Mr. Palmer, okay, well, let's go ahead, let's call the police, let's bring the police on, and we can escort everyone else out that wants to mouth off about that. And that's when it got his, and councilman saying, or other people talking, and that's when you're done. I have a problem with that, in that, when you have a meeting open to the public, short of profanity, pornography, making threats, or anything, or anything liable, then you trample on somebody's personal rights. I fought for it, I know what it means to have it. Members of the public have a constitutional right and a civic duty to debate and discuss how their government is performing. Based on the Fourteenth First Amendment right of free speech and intellectual freedom applies to state and local governments. Government agencies and officials are, are forbidden from regulating or restricting speech or other expression based on its content or viewpoint. Criticism of the government, political dissatisfaction, advocacy of unpopular ideas, that people might find distasteful or against policy, policy are nearly always protected by the First Amendment. Supreme Court ruling in Myers versus Grant nineteen eighty-eight, when Joseph, one justice wrote that the First Amendment is absolute unequivocal defense of court political speech, and is so self-evident that government actors flagrant attempt to regulate speech based on the content shocks the conscience.
Mr. Low, what, what's the point, where, where we getting at?
I'm making the point is, is that if you keep cutting people off, you're going to get sued.
Okay, who?
When, if a councilman says, I'm going to arrest you because I didn't like that remark you made.
Did anything happen? But nothing, nothing, police didn't come in, nothing happened, except later on, we got, I got called up.
All right, I'm glad you said that. Norris versus Senna Cruz, Ninth Circuit Court held that in limited public forums, as a council meeting, a city rule decorum will not be facially overbroad, where they only permit a presiding officer to ejecting attendee for actually disturbing or impeding a meeting. A city, however, cannot define actual disturbance, and any way it chooses, the statute must not unnecessarily restrict protected speech. And that's what I'm getting at, if them two can make comments and stir up, they set the tone for these meetings.
I would, I would ask that, let's keep the conversation going, not, not back there.
If they can, if they can set the tone for the meetings, they should be subject to it like everybody else. Yet they have free speech, but when they represent the government, their speech is almost limited.
Now, just to be clear here, this, this meeting that you're referencing.
The last trash meeting.
Ended when I left this room, I asked them very more questions, and not, the way I understood it, this.
Mr. Palmer said this is a formal meeting.
Okay, but when I left, it was over, like, no one else.
It wasn't over, but County was still.
I think you all had a lot of conversations, and that's where I.
People had questions, and Bill said, hey, this is a formal meeting, if you want to talk, come up here, that was what was said. So, that still makes it a public meeting, so.
Fair enough.
What upsets me is I have.
See, I thought it was over too, that's what I thought.
We, we adjourned the meeting, when we left.
I thought you got it.
I didn't do the meeting, but it adjourned.
He did got adjourned, because we left, but I thought what you're trying to say.
When I left, I said, no more discussion, we're going to go ahead and adjourn it.
We didn't open anything back up, people continue to come.
Right, you, you still had corn here, so it's still open.
The mayor, he broke it again.
But that is my point, is that, these meetings are getting out, and some people come to them just to see what happens, and that's a shame. We can't have everybody get along and question councilmen with that, some people taking a person, jabs back and forth, and can't hear what's going on, and nobody knows what's happening. And, and I had you told Mr. Sparks and Mr. Chister a couple of months ago, present this in a different way, people are not understanding. And, like I said, until I come up here and talk to y'all, I don't understand, have no clue. A lot of people for it, a lot of people are against the ticketing, things like that, it just, that's just the way it is. The other question about the vote, is, is the public entitled to vote? From what I saw, the vote or not.
Let me back up. The answer, the, the vote that was, that was taken a few, several years ago, that was just a, uh, a recommendation. It was an unvinding vote.
Right, okay, so petition.
And, and, well, there is, there isn't referendum, I mean.
So, here's the other question I asked then, is that, in, uh, can't remember the section, where twenty-five percent of registered voters can petition the city to repeal the ordinance.
Yes.
Which, I mean, and that's something that could possibly happen. I'm just saying, what y'all need to prepare for, because when these meetings come in and everybody's fired up and stuff, we're set up for failure every single time. And the problem that comes is when you question your government, nothing, nothing scares the government more than a person with the intellectual ability and the educated ability to make a decision and question, and then you get hatred and rhetoric back in return, and nothing gets better. So, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, these meetings need to be a bit more civil than what they are, I agree to order for everybody, I do. But, not the extent of when you violate somebody's rights, that, that, that one I stand for. I mean, it's, I mean, it's all, everything, you know, get it all out and open, but like I said, there has to be a chance, and it should start by the way.
Mr. Low, before you sit down, I would like to address your request for the budget. I'm doing this off of memory, because I had no idea you were going to bring it up. But as I remember, you asked for the last three, here's budgets, and.
Last five years.
Can I finish? And I told you that I had the current budget handy, the others, I was kind of in the middle of something, would take a little bit longer for me to get hold of, hit you. You said something to the effect of that was okay, that.
I said, that sounds good. I said, sounds good.
Right, sounds good, so to me, that meant you wanted the current one, you did not need the others, and I gave you the current one.
Okay, I don't recall getting the current one, because it all came from the same textbook.
Well, I can definitely fix that, I, I try to be very diligent.
Here's the thing, all I'm saying is, I'm just trying to get this out, because the director told me I could file the complaints if I want, and they'll gladly come down and investigate. I don't want that, I'm just telling everybody, this is what you have to, you got to follow the Sunshine Law.
Exactly, and I try to be very diligent when records are requested. If you didn't get it, I mean, I wholeheartedly apologize, and I can definitely fix that.
Right.
I can get that for you.
From my understanding, there's, you can contact anyone you wish, as far as I'm aware, there's been all open meetings discussed regarding this current issue we're talking about. The paragraph about Harps, I don't know what you're talking about, I, I don't know, but as far as meetings here, with the exception of the one we discussed, they've been pretty well ordered, people come, vote in, they speak their minds, and they sit down, and everyone's had the ability to do that.
Right, right.
Hey, I, I can answer the Harps, if you want to.
No, sir, I, I, no, we're, I'm good.
I'm just telling you what was told to me, I seen the pictures.
Well, this is all kind of secondhand, is why this is, and there's no fish to use, just secondhand, so, but that can be anything.
Right, the, the only separation, the only separation is a social, religious gathering, the only separation. That is what was out, what I was advised by the city. Well, and again, two members of the council is not, is not a meeting. Right, but if they discuss any public business or.
Two members of the council is not a meeting, and they can discuss public business.
And that, that's why he said it was questionable.
It's not questionable.
I'm, I'm just telling you what the state said.
I realize what he said, but I'm telling you, it's not questionable, if, if there's not a quorum present, it's not a meeting.
Right, because you have to have at least, what, six members present?
Yes.
So, anyways, that was, that's, that's all the issues.
We have, we have council members at it, almost every CLGW meeting, so, you know. All right, sir, thank you. Anyone else wish to pick a council? What else?
Yeah, Keith Weston-Bilson, not a street department citizen. A couple of weeks ago, I asked Brenda if she would forward a letter to all of y'all, uh, I bought the property of. I bought the property at one oh six South Walnut, which is across the street from some other property that I own, and it had a burnt out house on it that I've since tore down and cleaned up. And, uh, in talking to Brenda a couple of weeks ago, I found out that there was a lien against it from City for two hundred and thirteen dollars for cleaning, and I think with some fees, it would come up to about two hundred and forty dollars, I think she said. I would like to ask if the council would forgive that debt, since I've already bought the property, and it was against the person I bought it from, and it's already been cleaned up, house is gone, basically, it's an empty lot now.
And you're okay?
Yes, I own it, I bought it, I tore it out, now I will be maintaining it. I own four properties in that area, and my mother owns one next to it.
Seems reasonable, but that's up to you all, the council question.
We had this discussion a while back, and I don't know, did we make a policy then, or did we just abate a property, as you may remember? I mean, I.
Council has the authority to abate, not to abate taxes, to abate you property, break this type of way. The council has the authority to abate, can't abate taxes, which can't abate this.
Which we have taken the right to act on.
Yes. I just didn't remember if, because there was a discussion about it, and I don't remember whether we were gonna abate all of it, except maybe the filing fee or something like that, or whatever, but I don't, I don't remember what was decided, that's all I'm asking. Everybody else remember, I'm not, I'm not trying to change it for key, I'm just saying, did we establish a policy before?
We have done it in the past, and it has been done.
Abate all of it, or just for the filing fee?
I, I can tell you that, probably abate everything but filing fee or related, I don't, I don't remember, we have abated.
I do, we're not doing that, but I just, uh, you know, all I'm looking for is consistency, that's all I'm.
I think, I feel like in the past, you all had a agreement, for, you know, some sort of agreement, um, for maintaining the property.
That has happened, yeah, we have done that, people have bought properties and cleaned them up and maintained the properties that, that cleanings were, were abated. We have done that.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I'd just like to say, I'm very familiar with that lot, my grandparents lived at one oh four South Walnut for, I don't know, many, many years. So when I moved back here in twenty twenty, I drive by there reminisce, and I was appalled to see that structure at one oh six that was burned out, as, in twenty twenty, it was burned, I think, and there was a house there, and all, it was awful to look at. And so I thank you for cleaning that up, because it had to be a hazard for kids or anyone to go in that burned out place, and then for a while, there was a, a tree that was lying there, and that's all been removed, and so, you know, if the city had to clean that up, as we're doing some other things with title searches, which I guess is two hundred and fifty dollars, that already goes towards whatever that lien is, plus the cost of cleaning it up. So I just wanna thank anyone who cleans up a lot like that, especially without being legally forced to do it, so that's just my opinion.
I agree. I will make a motion that we completely abate this property, and that we establish a policy after this abatement of abating properties if needed, and we desire to, except for the filing fee.
Motion, second, discussion. All favor say aye?
Aye.
All aye. Motion passes.
Thank y'all, appreciate it, thank you.
Welcome. Miss Ellis, I believe you was.
Yep.
Brugley interrupted.
No, I was just casually walking forward, I, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone in the community that participated and supported the Shore Pro Watch Party. Jill Mobley with the Palace, they did a phenomenal job, she even kind of refreshed her venue there a little bit. It was a great turnout without incident, and the city of Kennet and the Chamber of Commerce supported the event. I also wanted to give a special thanks to Chris Crossno at the high school, because she came up with volunteers, Kennet High School volunteers, to be greeters, and to help us clean up around the property, and do whatever was necessary. They were very, very respectful and kind, uh, young, young kids. I also wanted to say thank you to all of the businesses that were around the palace that gave us access to courtesy parking, like the two offices, the Crow, Shetley, and McBay office, and Mr. Stokely's office, and Southern Bank, and Hobbs. They all said that we could use their lots for overflow parking. And I also wanted to say that, um, there will be pictures, or the photography that we had there on scene, uh, there will be pictures posted on the Facebook event page, so that you can just click on the link and download them, the pictures will be free. So if you had, there will be some candid shots there, but there will also be, where if you took and did a pose for your red carpet experience, those will be available for you to download as you wish. Were there any other comments, or, I just, again, I appreciate the support, and the Crow family was also very gracious.
I'd like to also thank Chief Wilson for being on site for the impact, thank you.
Yes, and we do have a few expenses that we're wrapping up, and we will get to those this week, and then everyone that won a door prize that was not issued at the event, uh, those will be sent out via email this week, we'll be wrapping all of that up. And then we have just a couple of expenses that we're finishing up this week, and we'll get everyone taken care of.
Go ahead, thank you, thank you all for doing the event. Good thing you knew Friday night and get it, so.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Anybody else? All what's? All right, see not anymore in public comments, uh, anything else, council? Waiting in turn.